And I guess we're about ready to start the hearing. My name is Tom Shuler, and I'm the chairman of the Stockbridge Zoning Board of Appeals, and we're here for an application for a variance. Before we begin, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of John Bianco. Well, he was a teacher and a mentor to me and some of the other members here in the ZBA, namely Miles. More relevant to this event, or this proceeding, he was a longtime selectman for the town for over 20 years, and I think all of us here should spend a couple minutes to at least acknowledge his contributions to the town and to the community. And I think his passing certainly is something that had an impact on me, and I think a lot of other people who knew him either as a teacher or mentor, or through his work for the community as a selectman for 20-plus years. So without further ado, I just want to acknowledge the contributions that Mr. Bianco has made to the town and to the community. Okay, at this point, I'm going to suggest before we begin that the board, members of the board announce themselves to the applicants so that they know who they're talking to, starting with you, Jim.
Jim Murray, Yale Hill.
Mark Mills, Cherry Street.
Catherine Chester, Church Street.
Miles Martha, Train Hall Road.
Secretaries, I'll be taking notes.
Patricia Androm, Cherry Street.
Okay, we're here today for a public hearing on an application filed by the Berkshire-Waldorf High School Incorporated and the First Congregational Church, United Church of Christ, Stockbridge, Massachusetts, pursuant to Stockbridge zoning bylaws, Section 7.2.2, requesting variances with respect to Section 5.5, Table of Dimensional Requirements, for the residential R2 requirements, as well as the dimensional requirements stated in Section 6.14, Paragraph 2 of the bylaws with regard to property at 4 Main Street and 6 Main Street. Properties are RC and R2. An application was filed by the applicants, Berkshire-Waldorf and the First Congregational Church. Notice was printed in the Berkshire Eagle on November 28th and again on December 5th, 2023. Notice was also provided to the Seven of Butters, which are listed in the application. Without further ado, I'm going to open the hearing or ask the applicant to present their case.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lori Robbins with the law firm of Heller &amp; Robbins, and with me tonight is Teresa O'Brien, the president of Berkshire-Waldorf High School, and Steven Sagarin, who is the treasurer.
Director.
Director, okay. And Pam Sandler, the architect, and Heather Brown, who is the surveyor with Forsyth Land Services. So we will go through some of the esoteric issues that this presents. The section of the statute that allows for a planning board to subdivide land, Chapter 41, Section 81L, has a rather esoteric provision. You might be familiar with subdivision plans, as long as it shows a parcel of land with frontage and acreage, it gets subdivided, and it's mandatory, it has to be done. There's also a lesser-known definition that says, "The division of tract of land on which two or more buildings were standing," when the subdivision control law went into effect in the city or town in which the land lies, "into separate lots, on each of which one of such buildings remains standing, shall not constitute a subdivision." And I think it provided that in the application, wanted to bring, just in case people haven't brought their own versions of it. So that is the provision whereby, when we present this subdivision plan to the planning board, the statute says, so long as it shows a division of land upon which two lots, two buildings were situated into two lots, they have to endorse it. However, that just allows the planning board to endorse it and to record it so that title can pass. But there are circumstances, such as this one, where what's being created are zoning violations, because we're asking for a subdivision of land where the resulting lot doesn't have the adequate frontage, it has just this frontage, and it doesn't comply with a number of things I'll get into. So this is just a copy of the assessor's map that gives you perspective on the church. Okay, you guys all have the church. The church is highlighted in yellow. The other parcel was separately subdivided many years ago as a separate lot for the town offices. So it has been separately assessed for all these years, and in 2005, I think, is when the town moved its offices to the school, and so this building has remained vacant, the old town hall, has remained vacant since then. There's been a number of town hall reuse committees that have looked to what can be done with this old building that's falling into disrepair, and at some point in 2018, Norman Rockwell Museum was negotiating with the church to take that over, and in connection with that proposal, they had to come before your board in 2018. So this board, and there is Tom Shuler, David Milvey, and Miles Moffett that was on the board at that time, who heard this application for a variance to subdivide a slightly different configuration. Norman Rockwell was looking to subdivide and acquire just the entire length of the strip that was the old town hall, legal description for the lease. Your board has heard this before, although it's very esoteric and unusual, it has been granted by this board for a variance to allow a subdivision of land. And the reason, but we're doing it slightly different reason, I mean, this was formerly, they were going to look for the entire lot, we have a slightly different configuration that includes the wedge of land in the front, and although this is all assessed to the town, Heather Brown can describe her research into how this was acquired by South Congregational Church in 1823. If you wanted to follow along in my addendum, I do have a bit of history here. In 1825, Thaddeus Pomeroy conveyed this parcel, that is, all of Parcel 2 and Parcel 3, with both buildings on it, well, it was the parcel that had a church on it, or meeting hall, meeting hall, I think is what that was called at the time, but it's shown on your assessor's map as the configuration that is Lot 3. Then in 1832, Oliver Partridge conveyed this wedge to the South Congregational Society, and that is the wedge that we'll go into when she describes how they acquired that and why her foresight has determined that is owned by South Congregational. And through the years, the entity that was known as Congregational Carriage in the town of Stockbridge and the South Congregational Society also, well, thank you, the Congregational Society of Stockbridge leased land to the town for the wedge that is the town hall assessed land. There are other entities described in the Registry of Deeds with different names, but now that they're going to sell this land, the seller's attorney has filed an application for the entity that is now named, and I have copies of all that, too, the Secretary of the State now named congregation, I'm sorry, the First Congregational Church, United Church of Christ, Stockbridge, Massachusetts. So that is the entity now that will be conveying this land, presuming all the permits are in progress. But they will be signing an affidavit that all of these entities that have recorded instruments at the Registry of Deeds are all one and the same, including the one that owns this wedge and this property. So in October 25th, 2023, the school, Berkshire-Waldorf High School, and the entity known as the First Congregational Church, United Church of Christ, Stockbridge, Massachusetts, entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the conveyance of this property to the school. After many, many years, the school has been looking for a new place to move. It has been in existence on Pine Street since 2013, so for 10 years, Berkshire-Waldorf High School has been in Stockbridge. They are receiving grants, benefits, donations sufficient to renovate this old building, and the church is delighted to have them next door. During COVID, they worked together to have mutual agreements with parking and use of the school and the church for their schooling, so it's turned out to be a nice arrangement between the parties. So we're before you to get a variance because though the Stockbridge bylaw allows by right the use of a nonprofit educational organization in this zone, it is subject to Section 6.14, Nonprofit Educational Uses. So on the front and then the back are the requirements.
Thank you.
And as you'll see, it says that they have to comply with all the dimensional requirements. However, this configuration does not comply with all those dimensional requirements, and there are reasons that we think would justify a variance to allow them to create this lot with these variances. What is nonconforming, and they can't comply with, and we're seeking a variance, is as to the frontage. The zone requires 250 feet of frontage. This is in the R2 zone. The assessor's map shows in green the commercial zone, the little bit of that land is in the commercial zone, but the rest of it is R2. So we're applying under the dimensional requirements for R2. It requires 250 feet of frontage and 2 acres. This property does not have 250 feet of frontage, it's 205 feet of frontage, and it does not have 2 acres. It has...
165.
Yeah. It has a combined square footage of 36,919 square feet. The remaining parcel complies with the zoning area, but it has no frontage whatsoever. So both, well, this is parcel, we're describing, this is Parcel 1 because it was separately described. This is all of the land that was described, but we've subdivided it into Parcel 2. So what is being proposed to the Berkshire-Waldorf High School is Parcels 1 and Parcel 2, and then the church would retain the acreage with the parking in the back. And the parties right now are negotiating an easement, a mutual agreement with regard to the parking, and the planning board has jurisdiction over wavering any requirements for parking. So we're not asking for a variance to this board because the planning board has that So in order to create this lot, there's a two-step process. One is for the planning board to endorse the plan, which they will because it's under this section, 4181L. However, case law, and I do have copies of all the cases, in case anybody's interested in reading these cases. Maybe only one person actually interested in reading these cases, but you can have them. They're in the file, you can have them in the file. But these cases essentially say, cases have established that that section, interpreting this section of the statute that says you can subdivide a parcel of land into two, upon which two structures that predate zoning, one case established that the planning board absolutely has to endorse it. And even though they endorse it, it doesn't mean it's a building lot. Subsequent cases say, just because it can be divided, you still need a variance. So that's the smaller case. So there are several cases that interpreted this to make it perfectly clear that a variance is needed if you're creating a lot under this section that doesn't comply with zoning. The approvals are for different purposes. One is to give marketability to the lots for recordation. The other is it enables the lot to be a conforming building lot. The action of neither board should, in the court's opinion, bind the other, particularly as their actions affect different statutory criteria. A variance is also a subject by the board, by a seminal case, Palits versus Zoning Board of Appeals, that talked about a case where there was a church that wanted to, it was in a residential zone and wanted to be converted to commercial, and it was granted. Butters appealed, and the court found that the uniqueness of your variance applications, what's unique about this property that entitles it to a variance? Cases have established that things like a church in a residential zone is a unique circumstance. What we have here is two very old buildings in a residential zone, and we're asking for a variance, and the uniqueness about this property is that we're creating a lot that has a building upon which there has been something since 1902 at least. So the variances we're asking for, and this is on the page, from which sections of the bylaw do you request a variance? Section 6.14-2, that talks about requiring the building lot to comply with all requirements. What we don't have is, we don't have frontage for Parcel 3, we don't have acreage for Parcel 2. Maximum lot coverage in this zone is 10%. The lot coverage for Parcels 1 and 2 with the building on it is 16.5%, so we would need a variance as to the maximum lot coverage. I also point out that MGL Chapter 48, Section 3, would give your board some guidance in that no regulations, and do I have that? No zoning regulation shall regulate or restrict the use of land or structures by a nonprofit educational corporation, provided, however, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of the structures in determining yard size, lot area setbacks, et cetera. So we're suggesting that even 48, because this is a nonprofit educational corporation, is additional reason why a variance can be granted, reducing these dimensional requirements. What is conforming, and what we do have control over, is the side and rear yard setbacks. The side yard setback on the easterly side is nonconforming, but that's been there, there's nothing we can do about changing that lot. The height of a building in this lot is 35, but Pam Sandler has determined that this is 43 feet tall.
Yeah.
To the ridge. To the ridge. And 6.14 said for educational uses, it can't be more than 2 1/2 stories and 50 feet tall. So we don't need a variance as to the height for the building. So those are the areas that we're asking for dimensional variations from. What are the circumstances relating to the soil conditions?
Before you start, I want to make sure we understand what exactly, what variance is specifically you're asking for.
Okay.
And let me just go through it to make sure I understand.
Sure. And by the way, I have sent an email with the word version of this for whoever, in the event that you do grant a variance, all of this can be...
All right, well, just looking at your application, and it's pretty thorough. What you basically did, I think, under subsection 1, I don't know what page it's on, you basically outlined what appears to be four separate variances. The first variance request would be that when combined with Parcel 1, if Parcels 1 and 2 are combined, you have 205 feet, and you need 250 feet.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
The next piece would be under B, there's no frontage for Parcel 3.
Correct.
And you need a variance because there's no frontage for Parcel 3. That's the second one.
Yep.
And then the third variance outlined here is if you combine Parcels 1 and 2, you have almost 37,000 square feet, and you really need 87,000 square feet.
Yes.
And change. So that would be the third variance you're requesting. And the fourth variance relates to lot coverage, and basically you need a variance there because the lot coverage would be in excess of the 10,000 required under the residence R2 zone.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure, one step at a time, then, okay.
Yep, so those are the variances, and then I go on to say that the reason you can grant that variance, or one of the additional reasons why you can grant that variance, is because this is a nonprofit educational corporation, and the items 1A through D are the reasonable regulations that I'm proposing would be appropriate for this structure that was built more than 100 years ago.
Okay.
And then I'm going to say that the division of land, the height of the town hall, and the easterly side yard and the rear yard setbacks are in compliance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I just wanted to make sure we understood what you're asking us to do. And I understand, obviously, there are requirements that need to be satisfied with respect of why we should grant that, but I think it's important that we know exactly what you're looking for.
Yes, and those are the only nonconformities with regard to the dimensional.
Okay.
Because the use is by right, and 6.14 does allow for educational and religious to have at least 50 feet of height, and this one complies with that.
Okay.
I have a question.
My question is on Parcel 1. It doesn't appear that it has anything to do with the school or land being used for any purpose other than just to give you some frontage and increase the square footage of the whole deal.
Well, the church owns it.
Yeah.
So they don't need this land separated from them, so the deal was...
Right.
It's open space.
It seems like the purpose of that is to give you a better, a closer attempt at the square footage as well as the frontage.
Yes.
Okay.
My question has to do with the variant, the fourth variance, it's being asked for, the lot coverage. It's clear that it's insufficient. Would it have hypothetically been possible to make that aspect conforming by reducing what we're calling Parcel 3? Or in order to make the new parcel conforming, would it have then made Parcel 3 nonconforming? I guess what I'm saying is, can you get the sufficient acreage without dropping Parcel 3 underneath, under 2 acres?
I don't know. I don't know how big, there is a church, then there's some other building, outbuilding there, and quite frankly, the church was not that agreeable to conveying any more land than they absolutely had to. In fact, originally, there was a discussion, and this was hotly negotiated, they were only willing to grant the narrow width that the town had that did not include the parking. And we said, no, 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 we really want to create a lot that includes at least the side yard setback. And I'm told, this delayed the negotiation for months. No, 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 we don't want to convey all this land, we want to keep it this narrow. And we said, no, 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 please, let's create something that at least has some, so I don't think there would be, I don't think the church would ever agree to convey.
Is there any case law dictating how land like this needs to be subdivided?
It's all unique. Every circumstance is unique. So that's why variances provide for, every circumstance is different.
Is it the 10% coverage, though? If they were granted a larger area, I think the both church and the town would comply, at least with the 10% coverage. I can't say.
And I think the 10% coverage may have more to do with concerns like parking. Unfortunately, between these two parties, they are negotiating a parking agreement, so lot coverage, I don't think, is as significant if there is an agreement to share parking. Because what would you accomplish by having more lot? Parking. But they're going to be, and this has historically been a shared parking lot between the town and the church.
And the golf course.
And the golf course, yeah, yeah.
Luckily, there's no school on the weekends.
Well, that's why it's a perfect...
And the summer.
And the summer, yeah. It's a perfect combination of uses for this old building. They're only there in September to June, and they're not, it exists on Sundays when there's churches, not generally when there's weddings. So it really works out well, and they don't interfere with the golf club because golf courses only open in the summertime, so it really is just a marriage made in hell. Amen. Heaven! Talking about church. Anyway, they have been negotiating this for nearly two years now, and it's been a long, long process, but we're making progress, and we think it's going to be a great, well, especially if they've got some money to renovate that old building that has been problematic for the church and the town.
So it's a maximum lot coverage, usually just for parking reasons, or is it also for stormwater management and things like that, you know?
It's in the zoning bylaws. I actually don't know the history of why that...
No, I mean typically, I think there's a limit on that for other reasons besides, right? Especially in a residence zoned area.
They don't, right, but I don't want you to, and then it's combined, square footage too, which really, yeah, the density, but it wouldn't comply either.
About how many vehicles on a typical weekday, Steve, would this school be firing?
15 to 20.
That seems like somewhat of a low number, given the fact that, are you going to permit your students to drive there?
They do. We have, I would say, between four and eight teachers on site at any moment, and then our older students drive, and...
Yeah, you can't drive until you're 16.
Yeah, so it's really...
Well, you may not be able to drive until you're 16, but it seems like everybody over 16 drives to high school. That's why I'm curious.
Mostly seniors, juniors, not so much. But we have, I think there are 21 spots where we are currently renting on Pine Street, and there's a lot on Shamrock that are tenants' spots, and seems to work good today.
Yeah, that's proof of the pudding. Where you're at is, you have parking.
And we had an assembly with 100 people this afternoon, and we just invite the parents to park on Main Street and clog it all up for you. Only there an hour.
Just like when there's a golf tournament or something, we have to park on Main Street. Or now, it has lights or...
And they use that parking lot for that.
Yes, yes.
That's in the evening, probably after school.
Well, I think I understand, I'm always speaking for myself, not for the board, what the various variances you're requesting, and I guess maybe, if you could, maybe you could address some of the other issues that we need to look at with respect to conditions for hardship.
Chapter 48, requirements for a variance, and you have them set out in your application, have five questions. What are the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, topography, shape, or the structures, especially affecting your property, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which you are located? And I mentioned this Johnson versus Board of Appeals, which found that something unique like a church building in a residential zone is something that warrants the granting of a variance as a unique circumstance. In this case, we have two very old buildings that would be the basis for why creating this lot, these two lots, upon which they both have buildings separately, is a unique circumstance that doesn't generally affect the zoning district in which it's located. There's not many other parcels of land with two very old buildings. How does the literal enforcement of the vision of the zoning bylaw involve substantial hardship financially otherwise? Do you do the circumstances referenced in this? A subdivision of the land creating lots upon which each of these two buildings will stand separately does, however, create dimensional nonconformities with regard to the lot area frontage setback. Each of the lots would be in violation of the zoning bylaw, and the church would not be able to convey the land, the old town hall stands on it, unless the variance is granted. So that's the hardship. Explain why the substantial hardship is not the result of your own actions. My response is just the two structures were built long before the current members of the church and the school were born. They didn't create this, they didn't create this nonconformity. Describe how desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public, good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of the bylaw. And my response is that 48, Section 10, the zoning bylaw, 7.232, authorized the Board of Appeals to grant variances, dimensional variances, and one of the stated purposes in your bylaw is to facilitate the adequate provision of schools. And so this enables... And so this enables the church to convey this property. As well as to preserve the value of land and buildings. The old town hall is falling into disrepair. Nobody's been able in the last 15 minutes, 15 years, to figure out what to do with it, but this seems to be the perfect fit. Established case law has affirmed that a variance to allow pre-existing structures to be divided into separate lots can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, where the existing structures are not substantially modified. That's one of the case laws, too. The subdivision of land into lots that provide for separate ownership of the church building and the old town hall that predates zoning would provide a permanent location for the Berkshire Waldorf High School, will make significant improvements to the historic old town hall. What will the requested variance enable you to do? The church will be able to convey a portion of its land to the school, enable to them to make substantial renovations to this deteriorated historic building and use it for nonprofit educational uses. The church does not have the financial ability to maintain or restore the old town hall. In addition, the division of the land into separate lots upon which a principal building stands will cure the non, pre-existing non-conformity of section 4.4 of your bylaw, which states that no more than one principal building or use per lot shall be permitted. Are there any previous special permits, variance appeals, or building permits for this property? Yes. In October of 2018, the Stockbridge Zoning Board of Appeals granted the Norman Rockwell Museum and the First Congregational Church of Stockbridge a variance for these exact same purposes, for the dimensional requirements, for the purpose of allowing the formal division of the properties located at 4 Main and 6 Main Street. The proposal at that time was to divide the line along the same dimensional lines as the area described in the 1902 lease. However, the parties, the current parties are proposing to convey parcel one, acquired by the South Congregational Church in 1832, as well as a portion of the land acquired by the Congregational Parish in 1825, so that at least the southerly and western side yard setbacks from the existing structure comply with current zoning 35-foot setback required. So for those reasons, we're asking for a variance for these dimensional, four dimensional requirements that you highlighted there.
Are there any exterior changes to the building contemplated?
We've already gone to historical commission, and we're granted a permit by them, but if you'd like, I'll show you a very large drawing and.
Is it changing the dimensional size?
No.
Okay.
Not one bit.
Is it going to stay white or?
It's going to look exactly like it does.
Not a pink building or something like that. You stole my joke.
We're going to remove.
I guess it's going to stay white.
You know, we're going to bring back doors that were originally used on the building, recreate those, refurbish the tall, huge windows on the exterior, because we can't even get a window that big, and I refuse to change.
All right, you've been busy.
Oh, yeah. All right, so here's the front of the old town hall. Basically, these are the existing doors that we're going to refurbish, that are there right now. We're putting new windows in that will match exactly what's there, and also this window here. So basically, from the front, you're really not going to tell. There won't be any peeling paint anymore, you won't be tripping over anything like that. On the side, there is a change that is different, and that's right here. This is the side that faces the church. What we did was we lowered the doors down, so the building would be accessible, so that will become another.
Were there steps there before? Are there steps there now?
Yeah, there are steps there now.
Gotcha. I thought I remembered seeing.
This door is more in keeping, also with, basically, where we had to draw original pieces from was actually in the older building over here. This has much more importance than this building does to historians, actually.
Really?
The meeting room upstairs has major importance, and we are totally restoring that. That's a big, big thing that we're doing.
This is more historical than that?
And, oh, I mean, you could talk to a historian, they would probably tell you, but this is, you know, built in the 1800s. And this is, yeah, this is 1824. I'm assuming you all know, but I'll tell you. The building, this little building in the back, used to be town hall this way, and the police section. Hopefully, none of you have ever had to go there.
Oh, no, we don't know anything about that.
Okay. This used to face Main Street.
Ah.
Okay, so they took it.
Oh.
And they spun it like.
When did that happen? What year was that?
Well, this was 1903, 1904.
Okay.
It's part of the 1902. Right, so then this, this is all the section here.
Horses and block and tackle for granted.
Right, but.
Look at the windows.
What?
The windows.
These are beautiful, these windows, and so those are, again, totally being, we're going to remove them, have them totally refurbished, and put back. She's going to make it shine.
You're going to be so proud.
On the rear that faces the golf course was really, I don't think it's an architectural term, but I'll call it bastardized.
Yeah.
And.
That's the term.
What we tried to do, and Carol helped me, and we literally could not find any pictures of the side of the original building. We did our best, we went inside the walls of the building to figure out how large the windows were, and then tried to, you know, make sure in terms of the light configuration that it was true to what was here. So this is new right here, the entrance, and again, this calls on history and proper detailing for the period. We are putting a new handicap ramp. It will be no more non-conforming in terms of where it sits. It's actually going to wrap around the building. We didn't think it was a great idea for the kids to kind of jump into the parking, you know, into the parking lot. So we'll go around, we'll get off that way, and we're also going to have a set of stairs they can come down in this direction over here. And the big thing you'll notice.
That's a proponent, this is not germane to our job. I'm just curious, is that going to be how kids go in and out of?
We think they will probably use the side entrance.
Probably. Yeah. Off the parking lot. Yeah. Off everybody.
So this is that side entrance right here, lobby, and the building will be totally accessible now. It's going to have an elevator. It's going to bring you up to the second floor, where this town will finally have a large enough space for people to have a meeting room, have a community supper. Yeah, just wonderful things are going to happen here. We did, so there were two stairs. We had to get a variance, and I worked with the building inspector on that, to not have this exit into this alleyway. I've driven my car, I've golfed, and that thing is tight. We've really had to try not to get heating and cooling equipment on that side. It's been tough. But again, we don't want to push this thing any further than what's here, it's so tight. And then you can see the ramp, how it goes around over here. We will be putting solar panels on the building. We did get that approved by historical, and it's been a major, one of the major things, I'm on the historical commission, I had to choose myself, but that's been brought up, what we do about that. And we've really decided as a group, it's very important. And with this building, I, the Valley Solar did a whole analysis, no one can see that high. You're not going to see the panels on this building, so.
Unless they're flying over.
And if you're in a drone, and, believe me, that was, so basically, they will fill the entire building, requiring, of course, extra structure. So a lot of fun things we found. We got up in the old section, and typical, when I worked on old buildings, I always find a lot of charred members. This was no exception here. It was really fun with this building, too, because this building, that meeting room, that whole space was a stage and everything, and if anybody ever goes down into the basement, you can even see the slope of the floor. It's really cool. But when you go upstairs, where this meeting room is here, this is where we're really restoring everything about the building. We're bringing it back to, you know, one door to come in, bringing back to life all the glass that was in this panel. So basically, people sat here and looked down into the, you know, the area below. One fun thing we're doing is we're putting an atrium kind of space, so we're bringing light through into the lobby.
It's kind of like a theater, then.
What?
Kind of like a theater? Kind of like the.
It was a theater before, right.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's no rake or slope to it.
Yeah, now it's, it's, you've all been up there.
Right, right.
I mean, it feels strange when you're in there, you know? It seems like something happened wrong, especially because the windows were just like cut off.
Right.
And then there's a full commercial kitchen, of which would be wonderful for the community.
So our, you know, our plan, we're looking at the first floor a minute ago, there's six classrooms down there, an office space.
Yes, classroom, 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 classroom.
Classroom.
Classroom, classroom.
Right, so, but now you can come in the lobby, and we will have a community room upstairs that the school will use, but we'll open up. And then on the first floor, you come in the lobby, park, come up the stairs, and so in the evening, when there's, somebody wanted to have use of the commercial kitchen for an event, they could. And we'll have a parking agreement with the church and the golf club, three entities, and the calendar's going to be kept with the office at the church. So then if somebody came to us and said, can we use a community space, we have to check with the calendar at the church office, and if it's available, and the golf club isn't having an event or something, then we would have it for the community use.
Nice.
And they wouldn't have to go in the classrooms, the way it's configured, you just come in the door there and go right up the stairs, so.
Right.
The school's a little bit separate from it.
Cool. That's great.
That looks fantastic. So the short answer is, not really.
No changes.
How many students do you have?
Currently, just over 40.
So.
Closer to 60 before the pandemic.
Is your capacity for most students?
In our current space, it's 60.
60.
With this, we'll hope to grow to between 60 and 80.
Hopefully, he will come.
Well, I hope so.
Does any, any members of the board have any questions of the applicants about any requirements with respect to granting a variance? Jim?
No, just two things I'd like to just make sure I understand correctly. The, based on the proposed dimensional with the lot size and the building, that there really can't be any changes to the exterior without there being an additional variance because of the rear setback is within a foot of the, you know, current bylaw. Anything going out two feet would need a variance, and the same with the side lot? Do I understand?
Any expansion of this would require a modification of the variance to allow.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other is that we're dealing only with dimensional issues that, this becomes a, if this variance is granted, this becomes a marketable property, and the Waldorf School could sell it to anyone as long as their use conforms with the existing, or at that time, bylaw uses within that zone.
Actually, no, there is discussion between the church and the school to have a restrictive covenant.
Okay.
That it can only be sold to other entities that have an educational or religious purpose.
Okay.
The exact language has not yet been formalized, but there will be restrictive covenant.
Okay, but that's none, we don't deal with that?
Right.
Okay.
Well, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I would just say for comments that strikes me as a, as a great plus for the town, for the school, without serious impact on the appearance or the use or the activity of the grounds, bringing to life a building that has been sort of dormant and been kind of an expensive eyesore. And the fact that it's for a, an educational purpose gives it a real plus. Just as an aside, I see the kids from the Waldorf in the coffee shop occasionally feed.
Occasionally feed.
Fabulous, fabulous group of young people. They're very, it's just great to see them in town. Like to see more of those kinds of kids in town. But I think it, I think overall, it's just a great plus, and it doesn't, you know, we're into the kind of the complexities of square footage here and frontage there, but you look at the overall purpose of this and its, and its impact, the impacts are all plus, and I don't really, unless anybody's watching out there that has some idea about what, why there's a problem, it strikes me as something that would be a great addition for the town, and I just don't, I just don't see any downsides to it.
Catherine?
I completely agree with everything he said, and even before the hearing, I was trying to play the devil's advocate and think of the counterarguments for why, not the little, you know, minutia, but just the overall concept of why, and it was hard pressed to come up with any negatives. It seems like there are very few uses that could check all the boxes and work with this bizarre configuration and need for multiple uses, and, and this proposal does, in fact, meet all of those. I think, I think the town is very lucky that this has come before it. None of that being a reason why a variance should or should not be granted, but overall, that's just very positive.
Well?
I guess I, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's a great step forward in improving the property, and glad it works out with the church and the other butters. I do have a question, though, where it says the action of neither board, when you're going before the planning board regarding parking, off-street parking, right?
Mm-hmm.
That that process and the process that the ZPA takes as to the dimensional variances, that they shouldn't bind one another. In this, this, that, this agreement that you refer to was specifically, was specific to that nature? That two things were going on simultaneously?
Yes, in other words, I could have asked for a variance for parking from this board, but because the zoning bylaw already provides that the planning board can grant a waiver, I thought it more appropriate to allow them to consider it.
And is that in process now?
Yes, and the hearing, it's been filed, and there's a hearing scheduled for January 2nd.
Okay, good. Yeah, otherwise, I understand the, it was a very good application, very clear, the drawings helped, so I thought it was a good package to sit before us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Patricia?
So I, you know, this, all of this was created over 100 years ago, and I think that what you're doing is a change that really has to be made in order to keep up with, with what we need now, what the times are. So. So it's amazing what you've, you have proposed for the Town Hall. It's just absolutely beautiful. I do have one question that's kind of a little offbeat, but we've always had like our Memorial Day parades, and they always end up on the front lawn. And I was wondering what's going to happen with like the veterans and the speeches, the wonderful speeches that people give.
Still going to be allowed to do worship down the front porch?
Yeah, our kids, a couple of years ago, participated. Right?
A gentleman who's an EMT in Sheffield now spoke at that event on Memorial Day.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah.
Good, good.
From my perspective, I mean, I look at it a little bit more from the perspective of whether or not you satisfy your burden. And I think that if you look at the circumstances here, it's a pretty unique parcel. You have a circumstance here where you have two old buildings right next to each other. And, you know, I don't think that giving a, granting a variance with respect to the various dimensional requirements and setback requirements and that you've asked for really undermines or undercuts the intent or purpose of our zoning bylaws. And I think that, you know, this is a unique property and a unique circumstance. And I think it's a pretty unique solution to what has been a real chronic problem for the town ever since the Town Hall moved from 2000 and 2005 down here. So, I mean, I think you satisfied, at least in my view, the, the requirements for, at least for me, to vote to grant a variance. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just one question there. You mentioned that there are four sections to this. Do we need four votes, or does one vote cover it all?
I think one vote would cover it all. I mean, I, the reason I, I think we kind of parsed through, and I asked Attorney Robbins to go through it in some detail just to make sure that we all understand. Basically, we're looking at four separate deviance, deviations from the setback requirements. I just thought it'd be important that we articulate it.
I'm glad you did that, because it helped me to...
So to me, I don't think we need to break this down individually. Next time, I won't use...
Deviations here, four deviants here.
I heard deviants, and I was like, uh-oh.
In 2018, when, when a variance was requested and that other triangle of land was not part of it, was that because the title research hadn't discovered that it was owned by an entity that could convey it?
I had found that they, that the church had owned it. I don't know why they didn't follow it. They might have been conveying just that parcel and, like, they conveyed that parcel separately, and then they were going to only subdivide the one lot. But this time, we're doing both at the same time. We're combining a lot.
The town map, for some reason, the GIS map, lists that little triangle as town property.
I'm going to say that's historical. It's been like that for a very long time.
Well, there's, there's a few quirks on that town map, anyway. So this is just...
Perhaps a not reliable indication of ownership. But Heather has all this research, and she can give you the...
No need. Nice job, Heather.
She's got all bound explanations.
Nice job.
We did fail to tell you that we will be refurbishing Arlo Guthrie cell. And when you come into that lobby from the police entrance, there'll be a window, and you'll be able to view.
Oh.
Sell tickets for that.
That's what's going to...
Free to the community.
We're going to keep that area as a little viewing area for, have other historical things in there as well about the building. And especially, we contacted the Stockbridge Muncie community because of their ownership. Well, was their land...
That's absolutely...
The land is very important to them.
Isn't it where you put bad kids?
Yeah, detention for ninth graders or faculty library.
Leave a bag of trash in the Arlo cell just as a little thing for the tourists.
Hey, Miles?
I just had another comment, too. This is an application for variance from two parties. Is there someone here representing the church?
He's right up there.
Then see.
Okay. The only other thing I wanted, we do have a few people that are on Zoom. I wanted to see if anyone had any questions or comments or observations, certainly your opportunity to speak or comment on what, on the application. We're all ears. Hearing no response.
I would, I would just say, as a representative, I've been on the committee at the church, and it's been alluded to. We've had a lot of negotiations. We've been involved in this process right from the get-go. But I, I just want to say that from the Tricia's point of view, we're fully behind this. It's, it's a wonderful solution. So we are, as an entity, are fully behind this.
Thank you.
For the record, Buck Smith.
Yes.
Or a member of this board.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, at this point, I would move to close the hearing and bring the, bring the application to a vote.[1734.24]